I would like to call to order the Winthrop School Committee meeting of Monday, November 21st, 2022 at 6:00 PM. We are meeting in the Harvey Hearing Room in the Town Hall, One Met Calf Square in Winthrop. This meeting is being recorded and will be televised live. May I have the roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Littary?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci? Ms. Swope?
Present.
Ms. Barry?
Here.
Ms. Powell?
Present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Barry, can you meet us?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have public comment tonight?
And you're going to be recorded. Let me get ready. So, I come here tonight, Todd Sattler, precinct two, I think you all know who I am. Sure, there's a few of you on here that don't care much what I have to say tonight, but in the name of the children, I would ask you to put your savers down and just hear me out. Last week, there was discussion about a book called Jack Not Jackie. Jack Not Jackie comes off as a fairly famous book. Tonight, I'm going to talk about why it may not be. You've all been given, sent emails that have two, or two emails. One has a New York Times article that addresses puberty blockers and testosterone treatments and the irreversible damage. It's the New York Times, not some crazy right-wing nut. It's the New York Times. I also have a story here of a young girl that I'm going to read a portion of in a moment, who's 18 now, who's suing her doctors for malpractice. But to the book, the first, very first thing that jumped out at me about this book, excuse me, is that this book re-legitimizes all of the worst gender, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Gender stereotypes of gender identity. It basically says because someone is choosing to dress as a boy and do boy things, they should be a boy. I grew up with, I grew up with several tomboys. One of the tomboys lived around the corner from me. Better athlete than most of the boys during that time period, more fun to be with, whatever. If that person went through top surgery today, she may not have the family she has and the life she has. This book leads to only one conclusion, that Jackie is Jack. And it's not always the case. Is every person that has gender dysphoria going to be transgender? The statistics simply don't bear that out. It's such a small part of our population. So, that's my piece there. You don't believe me? Do you believe Sweden? The entire country of Sweden has outlawed the use of puberty blockers and steroid treatments. Outlawed. Norway or Finland, I forget the second country, did it as well. Outlawed. If they're outlawing this, there's reasons to not ignore me. Tavistat Hospital in Britain shut down their gender-affirming care surgical division. Completely shut down. I'll leave it to you to look it up, so it doesn't come from my mouth. Vanderbilt Hospital in Tennessee has removed their promoting, their promoting information, or whatever you want to call it, on their website because they were busted on a video boasting about how much profit they make on top surgeries. This is the story of Chloe Holt. Started her transition at 12 when she came out to her parents. I won't read all that stuff. You can read it, it's in your inboxes. But here's the end. Despite all these consultations and classes, I don't feel like I understood all the ramifications that came with any of the medical decisions I was making. I didn't realize how traumatic the recovery would be, and it wasn't until I was almost a year post-op that I realized I may want to breastfeed my future children. I will never be able to do this as a mother. The worst part about my transition would be the long-term health effects that I didn't knowingly consent to at the time. I developed urinary tract issues during my transition that seemed to have gotten worse since my detransition. I've been getting blood clots in my urine and have an inability to fully empty my bladder. Boy, that sounds fun. Because my reproductive system was still developing while I was on testosterone, the overall function of it is completely unknown. I have irreversible changes and I may face complications for the rest of my life. I was failed by modern medicine. I have read over 100 of these individual stories myself. You can go out to social media websites and find detransition groups on these platforms. They've had to find their own safe spaces because the trans movement has left them behind. They kick them out. They don't care because they're not singing the same song. We have got to help our children in Winthrop. We have got to tell the DESC, first of all, to burn all of the stuff that they're trying to make us do. But if nothing else, I'm offering you a neutral book. And if you won't replace the book you have in the first grade resource areas, please consider putting this one next, next to it and making sure that whoever comes to you for a resource gets both books. Because not every child that's feeling uncomfortable in their skin wants to have surgery. They are children. They want to be firefighters. They want to be doctors. I wore girls' clothes too. I wore girls' clothes too. I certainly am not a princess. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there any other?
Hi, my name is Brianna. This is my wife Sarah. I did send a link, the email, to the school committee members, so I won't really rehash that. I just wasn't able to make it to the last meeting and wanted to at least speak up, especially in light of the recent transcript article about the book that Todd talks about. So, without any preconceived notions, my wife and I together read the book. We actually found it enjoyable at first. It seemed to be embracing the differences of two sisters. Unfortunately, our opinion of this book drastically changed when the author's conclusion was that simply because she wanted her hair short and played with toy trucks, she would identify as a boy and change her pronouns. It was incredibly disheartening. At first, when we were reading it, it like reminded Sarah of like her and her sister and the differences, and it just seemed to be an inclusive book and then took that nosedive. So, we were really disheartened. According to the transcript, this is about a young girl who identifies as a boy. On the contrary, it is about a young girl who doesn't like the stereotypical feminine toys or clothing. So, this means she is to change genders. I did not talk to Todd before this meeting, so I didn't know he said this stuff too. But it really is, it's very, it was misogynistic, it was very stereotypical. I mean, it, it was a lot of things, and I just don't like that exposed to the kids. So, I just have to speak up about it, and that is why I'm here. I think it's a confusing time for us all, but for our children, this is scary. So, why wasn't it told her that she could still play with these toys or she could still have a short haircut? She could be a tomboy, that's totally cool. There was none of that. It was, the conclusion was, you are going down this path and you're going to change your gender, you're going to be a boy. It's okay, you can go back to being a girl, then you can go back to being a boy, and that's what's happening right now. I'm talking to the kids, what's happening in the schools. I don't know who's qualified to choose these books. I understand that it's the teachers, but I just, sexual orientation, it can be connected to gender, it's quite complex. I was always feminine, still turned out gay. My tomboy friends, they either turned out straight or they turned out to be lesbians, but I could tell you, not one of us had any gender dysmorph, uh, dysphoria, sorry. None of us. The numbers are astounding. We have to look at the data. I know in the lesbian community, there's a big movement of this because there has been, you know, the more, there's different words, right? There's studs, there's butch, I don't like them at all, but tomboy, and it's not including that. Like, it's not including us and our differences. It's just saying like, hey, change your gender. And so, I think representation is super important. I love seeing books with different types of ethnic backgrounds. I think that's really important for our children to be represented and their families in the books that they read. I just don't see any, I don't see that this book represents that at all. It's literally telling kids to go down a path. That was what we got for it, and I feel like being part of the community, the LGBT community, it's important to speak up. So, that's it, that's what I had to say.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you, Brianna.
Is there any other public comment? Hearing none, I will close that section and I will invite our, we have a delegate and visitor today, so.
Thank you.
I will invite Aileen Pearson to come up.
So, I feel like an automatic disclaimer on my attire.
Spirit wing.
Spirit wing.
I also recognize that it's only been two weeks since you've had me, and too much of a good thing sometimes isn't a very good thing. I'm aware. It was my understanding that what I was to do tonight is to come in front of you and kind of give you an update as to where we are this year. Very, very different year, and I'm happy to be able to do that. I would recommend that when you're thinking about some of the information that I'm going to present, that you also keep kind of like a long-range forecast in your mind, and I'll take the liberty of pointing out a couple of those things for you so that you can think about that when it comes time to forecasting next year's plans, allocating budget resources. So, this, um, this slide is showing you basically the bare-bones facts. We have a population that's bigger than we've ever had before. You can notice that our EL population is extraordinarily big. It's almost 20 students more than last year. And when you take a look at the sizes that we have in our average class sizes, we are extremely fortunate to not only be able to maintain reasonable class sizes, we're also fortunate to have been able to add a new EL teacher to help us address the increase in that population. The other thing that really needs to be thought about is the number of special education students that we are picking up and enrolling in the district. And I mention that because as you can see, we added an additional ASD classroom this year, and it's at the pre-K level. I think I've told the committee before, and certainly the folks in the community that have used our schools, understand that we have tried very hard to maintain grade levels essentially being geographically segregated is how I say it. So, when I first came to the district, and you don't need to count back that number of years because it was even far more recently than that, we were able to have all of our pre-K and kindergarten students on one floor. The next floor was exclusively first grade, and then second grade was on the top floor of the building, and we kind of peppered some of those classrooms with speech and OT folks that were providing services, resource room teachers, special education teachers. So, because we've added this ASD classroom at the pre-K level and knowing the importance that these students have in having access to the bathroom, we have a kindergarten classroom that's now gone upstairs. So, if you look at the last bullet, you can see that the kindergarten room that's been moved upstairs, it's now fracturing that team. And thankfully, it's a very intact team, but it still takes a lot of effort to get up there and plan with your colleagues. It's a little bit confusing when it comes to students that are sitting in sets because they're not even on the same floors, so many students have an opportunity to pass one another gradually, not so much for these students. The room that we needed to use for this new kindergarten classroom that we had to move upstairs is actually our former music room. It looks awesome as a kindergarten classroom. It really is, it's awesome. But it put our music room in a multipurpose room. What's wrong with the multipurpose room? Well, it looks great because Ms. Maisy, our music teacher, made sure it looks great, and it definitely supports music. But acoustically, it's just terrible. We lost that carpeting that the first grade classroom now has. And so, I mention that because if populations continue to grow, I mean, the classic, there's no room at the end, is going to be what the committee is going to be looking at. So, I did want to bring that to your attention. Those are the most significant building changes so far, and again, mostly included with a long-range forecast. These are the things that I feel we have some bragging rights about, and primarily because we are in a post-COVID world right now, you know, by and large. We were able to bring Fun at the Ford back, a wildly popular program. I've summarized for you the number of students that were able to take advantage of it. We do have plans because of its popularity to offer two more sessions in the winter and spring. We really did miss having that income over the last two years. That income, thanks to Noel helping us manage it, is used to support Ms. Polo and Ms. McKenna, two incredibly helpful and very well-regarded teachers that are coming back and working with our struggling students. So, I'm glad to have the money available to be able to do that. We also are looking to bring back a few more teachers that we were able to use last year when we did have that COVID money available. So, hopefully, we'll be able to expand that as well. There's an opportunity for FKO to return for after-school care if that was necessary. Would it be a hardship? It would be a hardship in many ways because you can see we don't have rooms. So, we'd be doubling down on these rooms. Limited space would be available. But nevertheless, the fact that it's post-COVID, you know, we just, we're happy and we're smiling about it. The library has been cleaned, culled, reorganized, and is open and awesome. Students are really enjoying it. All the books have been, no joke, they've actually been dusted down and recategorized. So, many thanks to Dawn Hurley, who's in charge of everything, the volunteers she got, of which there were many, including retired staff that came back to help us out. We're putting volunteers to good use. We're so grateful that families are once again submitting their quarries and they're coming into the building. When I say put to good use, they help us facilitate small group instruction, you know, primarily for writing and things like that. Large-scale PTO events are back. The Ice Cream Social was wildly successful, and there are other events that are being planned. The Book Fair is back. It's actually going to be held next week, and we haven't been able to do that either. So, these are really good things for us and have made, just have made the learning year this year much more enjoyable and interactive for students. The most impactful additions this year don't really have an awful lot to do with COVID, with the exception of the last one, and that's the ability to teach without a mask. I spoke about that as recently as the last time I was in front of you, so I'm not going to go, I'm getting some head nuts, so it's okay to skip over that. That's the obvious, right? Okay. The addition of the EL teacher, so important, and I'm grateful for that. And the upgrade in technology has been amazing. We are finally at a place where we've got a one-to-one initiative going on between students and Chromebooks, and so what that does for us, it allows us to really personalize learning in a very meaningful and robust way. So many of our programs now do feature those individualized exceptions for students. And when I say exceptions, I mean subskill focus is what we've got going on there. When you don't have a one-to-one Chromebook initiative, students are taking turns having that opportunity. So, when students are going into independent learning stations and classrooms, they actually have instructional programs that are spot-on for exactly what they need. So, that's great. And the interactive teaching materials, it's cute and helpful to be able to see students approach a board and touch it, wipe things off, have their classmates see exactly where those errors were, and they're very powerful instructive instruments. So, this is it, right? It all comes down to curriculum, instruction, and assessment. Again, a lot of this was explained to you at the last time I was in front of the committee. We're using Letterland and Hegarty to address our early literacy skills that I think you may remember, at least I hope you remember. We had really, really good scores in that. You would think that there was going to be a lot of attrition from students, and without the benefit of those two programs being used in tandem, we would be in a very, very different place. In math, we have iReady, it's a very comprehensive program. It does have the personalized instruction for students. There's a lot more we need to learn about this program, and that takes us, keep that up here, I'm going to get down to that later on. Kindergarten does not use that program because it's a different content that they're being exposed to as part of the math standards. They use Cathy Richardson, which is hands-on materials. That's really the difference. So, it's conceptual understanding in kindergarten, using materials. In first grade, it kind of still remains conceptual understanding, but it's a little bit more firmly understood. And so, there is an expectation for mastery and the ability to not only just comprehend operations, but actually perform them. And so, it goes as we matriculate through the grade levels. Go Math is still a resource that we're being used. We've been using Go Math for a long time. It doesn't have the personalization to it. It doesn't have the interactive quality that keeps students engaged, but it still is a tool that we reference and use. Pre-K is being trained on December 7th and has already been used in a loosely interpreted fashion, Touch Math. But we do have training that's going to be scheduled for that. In science, we have a district-created five-E model, and we did that when we did the standards review with Ms. Gallivan. Want to say that was like four years ago. We worked with a department, we had a specialist come in and help us do that. Very effective model, making a lot of curious minds go to work in science this year. Our writing curriculum was something we created. Again, I tapped into a friend over at DESI, Joe Pitner. We used to work with the district, for those of you that remember him. He turned me on to somebody who was a phenomenal resource, a former administrator in Concord. She worked with a group of teachers for two years, and we developed our writing curriculum. It touches on all three genres of writing. It also talks about mechanic, and it also, it escalates in a upward spiral fashion, looking at letter formation and then journaling and things like that, capturing thoughts onto paper in a pretty well-developed fashion. We are just starting to implement elevation software. This is going to bridge a lot of learning gaps. Our EL teachers will have greater access to tracking student performance in other areas. As it stands right now, EL teachers are confined to teaching, reading, writing, speaking, and listening, and there's a lot we can do with that when we've got data available to them. And so, the elevation software is going to help us do that, and as it notes on the slide, we'll be able to, they'll be able to take a look at student progress, organizing data, and measuring learning year over year. And that matters because it actually is the EL teachers that provide that soft tutorial for the grade-level classrooms to know where they can shore up their learning and in return, where the EL teachers can touch upon what we're covering in the classroom to shore up the instruction in a small group setting. So, you can imagine that the large group setting is where the teachers are going to be able to get the support from the EL teachers, and they'll integrate that to the whole group instruction, and in return, the EL instruction that students leave the classroom for, small group learning. So, we might as well take some of those skills that we're struggling with in the classroom, ask the EL teachers to help us out in a smaller group. So, that leaves us with instruction. I spoke about the impact of the interactive technology, so we're grateful for that. We also spoke about, at the last meeting, the clever accounts. And the clever accounts are what we're using to make sure that students have quick, easy, and uncomplicated access to all of the programs we're using. We finally have that, and that's been great. It's even something that families can use at home, they've got the clever information. So, it's efficient access for everybody. And elevation, which I just explained, exactly what that does. Now, we're only down to assessments, and assessments have really been boned up this year. This year, we're using a group of assessments that aren't just used at our level, but they're also used K through two. The most notable one is through Renaissance, it's called CBMs, Curriculum-Based Measures. I touched upon that the last time that I was with you. That provides us very specific drilled-down information on discrete skills, and having that is, it just drives our, our instruction in small group. It also, as I had mentioned the last time, facilitates our walk-to-learn model, meaning finding out what sub-skills students are weakened, if they're better covered in another classroom, and advanced skills are better covered in another classroom. We've got the information in these sub-skills so we can move students and migrate them between classes, generally by grade level, but for students that are true outliers in terms of what they're demonstrating on the assessments, we do open it up to other grade levels. It's really about the skill we want, and we kind of blur the lines when it comes to grades. Grade-level data meetings, data team meetings are used. This year, we've also added another layer of data team meetings, and those are progress monitoring meetings. They're currently being used both for reading. We are going to switch that focus after seeing the district's data, and I'm not here to talk about this again, just want to say that, after seeing the district's general data on that. We know what that means, and we're on our way to addressing it. More to come on the next slide. And then Satchel Pulse, which is a brand-new SEL assessment tool. The department has asked that all districts implement a tool like that, and it's a good idea. It's a helpful tool because what we know is that when students don't come to the table ready to learn, typically, they do not learn. Their basic needs need to be met. We all know Maslow's hierarchy. Don't, but there's a hierarchy of needs that we use in the educational world, and this helps us know whether or not students' needs through that hierarchy are being met. So, with all that information, or at least the overview of that information, what are we going to do? Well, we're not going to do anything I haven't already told you about. We're going to try and address the social and emotional needs of students as we know them. I did ask Ms. Scorzella, who is school adjustment counselor, extraordinary. I mean, there isn't a thing that she's not willing to do. I did ask her to provide us with the numbers from last year to this year, so you could see what we were able to accomplish when we had two school adjustment counselors. With the increase in students that we have and the impact of this world on students, we really, really need an additional school adjustment counselor. This comes to you before we even have the Satchel Pulse data. We expect that the Satchel Pulse data could influence the needs of our students just slightly as it provides us with information that students are pretty good at not sharing with us. So, we would love to have another school adjustment counselor. A reading specialist. The increase in enrollment in conjunction with the fractured instruction that students have received over the last two years, and I summarize that instruction for you. I broke down that we had an entire year that was exclusively remote, and then when we came back, not every student was in school, it was an optional attendance. And when we came back after that, we started the year in masks. So, you can see that it's a different instructional approach in all of those years, and that lack of consistency has an impact, and we need another reading specialist. We've been saying that for years, we only have three. Last year, we did not provide any instruction at the kindergarten level. This year, we're providing, I wouldn't even say moderate, instruction at the kindergarten level. We're doing the best we can, but we definitely need another reading specialist. But what we really, really need as well is a dedicated math interventionist. The dedicated math interventionist would be the person who would help us coordinate and support teachers in planning for small group experiences. It would provide that in-house professional development. The professional development is very specific depending on grade level, and it has this cascading effect. One baseline skill gets mastered, we add another skill to it, you have to connect those skills, and we need somebody who can help us do that so we know that the instruction is being comparably delivered in all of our classrooms. This person would also be able to help us figure out how we're going to group kids according to the power standards, but also understanding that the power standards are only one element. The power standards being those standards that have the greatest impact on student learning success. But within those standards are subskills. So, trying to get to the standard as it's overarching through the subskills that cascade under it is very tricky, and we could use some support with that. And then facilitating the data-driven conversations. With all of those things in place, through the support of a dedicated math interventionist, we may be able to develop a robust RTI model in math without the benefit of teacher instruction, without the benefit of teacher instruction. We have one block where we can use our specialists and me and Ms. Tucker, and we go in and we teach RTI. So, everybody effectively is getting a dose of RTI, meaning RTI rotations happening with two teachers in one classroom in reading. Imagine how powerful that would be if we could do something like that in math, and this interventionist potentially could help us design those centers and maybe even rotate into classrooms and provide that support. If they couldn't rotate into classrooms, maybe we could call the needy students and have them serviced separately. There's a whole bunch of different things that we would be able to do. The final thing that we are going to be doing, which has nothing to do with additional staff, and that's why it kind of looks like an add-on at the end, is revising our student support team process. That is a district initiative. A student support team is intended to provide specific strategies that teachers can implement to improve the performance and learning outcome of students. So, it works like this. You have a child that you're concerned about in your classroom. You complete paperwork that calls for data, it calls for student work samples. We come to an SST. It's a group of people that represent various pockets in our school. There's a speech person, there's an OT person, there's a reading specialist, there's a resource room person, there is the chairperson of special education, the classroom teacher, and admin. We're all sitting around the table, we're looking at the work product from the student, and we're saying, huh, have you tried? Have you tried? And we give them these things to go back and try. Then they come back, six weeks, eight weeks, they do their progress monitoring, so they're checking student performance every couple of weeks, come back, sit around the table, this strategy worked, this strategy didn't work, we're all out of ideas. Now, finally, it looks like we're going to have to do a full evaluation. It's an incredibly important process. It could be considered really the cornerstone of where general education and special education intersect and potentially escalate. So, that process is really important. Is that something that's going to happen this year? No, no. This year, we're going to be working with the REMI Center so they can help us This year, we're going to be working with the Remy Center so they can help us understand what that process needs to look like, what that process needs to include. The Remy Center has already been working with us with all the administrators in the district. We have representative teams. And I think, I think it holds a lot of promise.
That, that particular process, the S3 team development, is district-wide. So I think that's important. No, that's, that's every school. We put together our teams and recognize the need to really understand how to bridge that gap, so that we're not misidentifying students or not identifying students at all, not in, in being careful not to identify students in need of special education when they're really not, when it may be something else that they require, because the interventions are very different. You know, specialized instruction is very different than interventions to take a student who has a gap in learning as opposed to a learning disability. Those things are super important for us. And, and things have changed. The way our students look have changed. I think this is, you know, the perfect time to really hone in on how do we do this and do it with fidelity, and, and make sure that our students are being identified and the interventions are proper for those individual students. So it's something that's going to necessitate a lot of work, a lot of after-school time with the teams of people that have sort of volunteered or been voluntold that we would like them to do this work with us. And, and I do think it will streamline a lot of the work that we do and make us more efficient, and create some consistency of practice across all schools, which I think is super important to the leadership team for sure in, in doing that. So we're pretty excited about it. It is a lot of work.
It is. It is. It's a lot of work, but I think like Mrs. Howard said, the strength of the S3 work is that it is done district-wide. What you don't want to have happen is have students to be over-identified for evaluation. You don't want the process, the student support process, to change from school to school. That's not what parents want. Parents don't want to be in a, in a position of going to the coming school and saying, that's a world of difference from how they do that over the Fort Banks School. That's not a consistent, well-thought-out district plan. This is going to be a well-thought-out district plan. And in fact, like the superintendent says, the Remy Center really only wants to work with districts that are committing at the district level, not at the school level. You still have an opportunity to fine-tune certain things, your approaches to things, but the process itself, the strength of it really is that it goes K to 12. That's all.
Any questions?
Yes.
You go. You go first.
I'll go first.
So a few questions. At the beginning, you said the population of the school is 504, did you say that first?
Five oh one.
Five oh one. And how is that broken down?
Sixty-five, one forty, one fifty-four, and one forty-two.
Sixty-five.
Did you mean like grade level, Ms. Lutteiri?
No, yeah, I just, I didn't see that part of the slide.
So you can see your EL students are there, you can also see the class sizes that we're looking at.
I guess I'm looking at, it, it's a couple of questions going in. You know, seven years ago, when we went through transition and swing space and everything else, we lost the multipurpose room, right? We never had it back since. It was supposed to come back as the original multipurpose room.
Tell me more.
Are you talking about the coming school?
No, I'm talking about the Fort.
Oh, the Fort?
The multipurpose room right off, across from the...
The stages?
Yeah. Is that a multipurpose room?
No, it's a musical room now.
Right. But it's, it hasn't been a multipurpose room since seven years, right? Pretty much since the swing space. It never got put back.
No, I don't know if I could really say that.
It's been used as offices on the stage and different things.
No, but we've also used that room for performances, so for instance...
But I, I guess my question is, is there a way physically, forgetting about the money and everything, just asking, is it physically possible to get that back to what it was intended for?
Only if you can help me figure out where I'm going to put music.
Okay. And, and I guess my point is if, so if I'm looking, is it simple as to say, so how many sections in first grade?
So in first grade, we have eight.
Eight. And next year, seven probably?
Really?
Well, no, I don't know.
We're hoping to keep it, we're hoping to keep it...
No, but I'm wondering, you know, is it as simple as looking at the kindergarten class at one forty and saying, okay, you're going to have, you know, fifteen less kids, so that's a twenty...
So in kindergarten, we have seven sections.
Right.
In first grade, we have eight sections.
Correct.
So imagine if we went down to seven.
Well, I'm saying, well, if kindergarten, you have seven now, wouldn't that translate to seven first grade?
Well, only if, only if enrollment stays down.
Right.
We know that's not the case.
Exactly. Okay. So I guess that was my question. In typical year, what is, what does your enrollment jump from in kindergarten to first grade? Like, what was the kindergarten enrollment in the last year?
Oh, boy.
That were at one fifty-four.
I think it was one fifty-four, yeah.
Right. So it's pretty much right on stat. So I'm, and it's hard, because we don't have the space, right? We just don't have the space and everything else.
We need, we need a building plan. We want to extend the size of the building, then we can add more classrooms.
Yeah, a trailer.
You don't want to add a trailer. All right, let me just skip around. So you, you kind of, I got the impression you said, you know, you talked about math and how we talked about it last thing, so you think you'll be, will be heading towards grade-level data meetings for math?
That's what we want.
So that is something this year that we should have?
Well, we are going to be doing that. So we are transitioning, one of our grade-level data meetings now is going to be dedicated to talking about math. It's not going to be, it's not going to be conversations that are as robust as we would like, because we need some help in that. We need professional development in that. We need training. We had a lot of PD from iReady, but there's a difference between theory and practice, right? So when you go to this PD, a lot of times, they're delivering the information, which is what I call like in theory, but then to literally get it in practice, you need somebody who's next to you and saying, okay, so what would you do with this data? How does that data compare to what you had last time? Where do you think the focus of your instruction needs to be? What are the types of materials? Ancillary materials that are above and beyond what iReady can make available? And how are you going to use those materials? For the benefit of your whole class, for the benefit of a small group? We've been so fortunate to have that with a dedicated reading department. The reading specialists are incredibly skilled, and they have all the respect of all the teachers. That's exactly the kind of model that we need to develop in math, and we've got to start somewhere. So this year, we'll start with just some of those data analysis meetings.
And then just two quick points. PD, do, you know, I'd love to spend more money on PD, and we just don't have more money, but is there a way that you think we could use PD in a better way? Or do we, do we maximize our use of professional development?
So like I've shared with the superintendent, I think the biggest issue with PD is that they're half-days. You know, it's really hard to get sustainable learning in there, you know, from teachers on half-days.
Right.
Honestly, and we have staggered schedules, right? So by the time we get the teachers all together in the same room benefiting from professional development, you know, we can max out at two and a half hours, which is generally what we can carve. And that literally is maxing it out. It's just not enough time to get a presenter and take the information they share and apply it. And it's, you want to apply it in real time with the presenter there. Our full-day PD days are front-loaded at the beginning of the year. And at that time, it's before we realize where the real need is. I think that would be the biggest thing that I would say about. I mean, if you were to count on a calendar, you say, well, you have a generous number of professional development days. I even talk to colleagues about that, and they say, that's not so bad. And I'm like, no, no, that isn't so bad. Here's the bad part. Collective hours?
Not a lot.
And I think you have to think about the professional development district-wide. So we've made a commitment to sticking to our strategic plan and our school improvement plans when it comes to goals and, and what we're asking our teachers to do. I think one of the biggest messages that came through five, we'll say five years ago now, four, four and a half years ago, was this, the notion of being fatigued with different initiatives, and the teachers feeling like, one week it was, this was what we were going to, you know, focus in on, and they put all kinds of effort in professional development into something new, and then the next year, it would be something else new. And then what happened to the new thing from last year? And so I think a lot of our teachers spoke up and, and really felt strongly that if we're going to commit to something, we need to commit to it and stick to it. And when we have professional development time, we need to focus in and sort of land the plane. Do the work, and, and not then just curb off and go do something else, but stick to the plan. So there is, obviously, there's a district-wide plan, and then at the building levels, there is sort of another, just another plan for that particular building. So our professional development is very focused on the district-wide strategic plan, but then also on the individual school improvement plans. You think of the high school, the work that they are doing with UDL. You know, that is different than some of the focuses in the other buildings. So they have their individual school building focus, but also the district-wide focus. And to speak to Eileen's point, you know, we have staggered times of start-and-end times by, you know, some, in some cases, minutes at the, at the Gorman Fort Banks. And I know that's frustrating for parents with, with transportation, but when you think about the management of a building and trying to maximize the amount of time you have with your professionals and allowing them to all be together at one time, people don't oftentimes see the, sort of the management aspect of that. If we had teachers coming and going forty-five minutes apart, we would never get them together. And we could not make some of the work we need to do with them, you know, effective, because they do need to be together to get that work done. So that was just adding to the focus on the board.
Yeah, and to add on to that, I think that's a really important point. When you have, you know, these short days for professional development, and you know you have a lot of PD that's needed, it compromises our ability to have sustained focus. And that's really big. You know, that speaks to what Mrs. Howard was saying, when teachers sometimes are feeling like, it's a flavor-of-the-month approach. You can't keep giving us PD in this and then saying, okay, now turn that off and start thinking about this. That's not, that's not deep-rooted understanding of an approach. And another really important consideration in trying to catch up where we've been missing is that for the last two years, we've been working on accelerating curriculum. It's all you heard. Accelerate the curriculum, find those power standards, teach through that. So we've spent so much time teasing out what those power standards are and refining our approach to covering the skills within those power standards, that we haven't been able to look at the bigger picture in a sustainable fashion. So it's just a confluence of a lot of conflicting needs over the past two and a half years.
And just one more, then I'll let you go. But on that slide, when you had your three big asks, right, pretty much? Yeah. So you have your school adjustment counselor, your reading specialist, and your math intervention... They're all full-time bodies there. If you had to pick one, which one is going to hit the most students, I guess? Which one is going to benefit the most students, in your opinion?
Same question we talk about every day.
Yeah, it is the same question, and you realize that you're setting me up to really upset an entire pocket of people, and probably more than one. So here's what I'm going to say.
Let me ask you a different way.
Well, let me answer the part that you did ask.
Okay.
Because this is important. It depends on what time of year we could get that staff person on. And money becomes available at different times of year. Sometimes people leave, sometimes they resign, it's not always when you expected. So to answer your question just this way, if it was at the very beginning of the year, and we had the ability for thought, forethought and planning, I would probably answer you, the math interventionist, because I have the data in my head from the presentation two weeks ago. And it screams, you know, it really does, and it uses a very mean voice when it does. If a pocket of money became available after the school year began, and based on what we're seeing in our students now, I would have to go with a school adjustment counselor, because we don't have the kind of PD that we would need for the math interventionist to be optimally helpful. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yep.
So it kind of depends on the time of year. So if it comes time to budget season, and you say, all right, where do you want that money going? You're going to hear me say an interventionist. If something happens before then, it's going to be the school adjustment counselor. Do we need a reading specialist? Absolutely, for the reasons I've already said.
So I, I think it's important to, Ms. Pearson, to, to note that these are not new asks. If you go back to our, to our, so if you want to do a school department Bible study, if you want to call it that, you go back to the last five years and turn to, say, it's chapter four. We keep repeating this, so this is not new. But I think it's critical to understand that this is not the first time Ms. Pearson has talked about this with me or with our leadership team. We sit a lot and talk about, okay, where are we at? I, I'll be talking about a, a number of people who are not, not working here anymore because they have, have resigned. Some of those people have had babies over the summer and were due to come back into their position, and they have chosen for their own personal reasons to step away from teaching and, and focus in on their family. That automatically means we may have a savings in money. And what do we do with that savings of money? So that constant movement, it's not like money's sort of just, you know, an airplane comes by, instead of dropping jet fuel, they drop off a bucket of money. It doesn't work that way. It's the money that we have, and how we're utilizing that money on the daily, if we know that we have a pot of money that can solve one of, these are three issues that you're seeing. There's about five hundred more that have sort of just built up and built up and built up. And yes, our priorities change year to year, but typically, the needs of the, the amount of staff that we need to handle the needs of our children gets higher and not lower. So we, we have this constant conversation, you know, as you know, right now, we're in the midst of teacher negotiations. You know, we have a contingency account for that, but as things settle and as people kind of move and flow through the district, if there is additional funds, we have a plan for those funds. And it's a, it's, it's a priority list that changes frequently. Something could pop up tomorrow that speaks to us as a major priority at the high school or the middle school. And that constant list of things that, as you know, I never let go of, because I repeat it to the committee and to the town every year. And sometimes things go away, because we've resolved them in another way, and they come off of the list, but that's kind of rare.
I mean, in a population, Ms. Lutteiri, of five hundred and one students in the building, to only have a school adjustment counselor that can cover forty students is alarming.
I think you need to let them know she also, she also tries to maximize her role by teaching within the classroom to cover, so she's not just sitting in an office, we bring the kids in, you fix them, and we put them back in the classroom. She does see students individually, she sees kids in small groups, but in order to...
And she relates the lesson.
Yeah, in order to spread herself out and potentially grab a number of kids at once, she goes into the classroom and does, you know, classroom-wide lessons on things that we have identified that seem to be a common issue, you know, in a specific grade or the specific age group. So she has maximized to the end.
She really has, and super responsive to the needs of teachers. If teachers say that there's a certain issue that's going on in the classroom, she is right up there and on it. But, you know, once a week, lessons in the classroom is also added on to her plate.
Ms. Hope, you have a question?
Is it, is it possible? I mean, this is a very different way of thinking. Let's just take the dedicated math interventionist. Are there a group of faculty or stu, teachers that are interested in math? I mean, very interested in math, that are on your staff, that would be willing to actually direct their professional development to math? And therefore, become kind of an inter, a, a team within the school that is, that people would go to because they particularly like math and they're really good at it?
So I think I understand what you're asking, Ms. Hope, but I'm here to tell you that our teachers give everything they have to their students. I can't imagine, I can't imagine a teacher, no matter how passionate they are about any content, being willing to take any time away from their students who so desperately need them for an initiative like this. This is nothing that's going to be solved in one or two days, and it's not going to be solved in ten or twelve minutes.
I'm talking about the time that you're spending in PD. I'm talking about the time that teachers are, you know, dedicated, those half-days. But knowing that there's a group of people there that have either taken additional courses or, or just, are just really better at teaching math than most others.
Well, I don't think that we have enough PD behind us for teachers to step up to that role. They need more PD in iReady. They need more support in analyzing and interpreting data. Would there be a core group of them? I mean, I suppose there could be, but, and I'm not dismissing your suggestion, and I don't want to talk around it, but I'm going to be direct and tell you, I would never ask them to do that. Every second, they are thinking about and planning for different ways to meet the needs of their students. I see them stressed, I see what they do during the day, and I'm so grateful that their head is still in the game and they still have this commitment to students. They have been asked to take on so many things over the last two and a half years. They've been asked to, asked to teach themselves technology and to master it. They've been asked to differentiate instruction outside the realm of what is reasonable, because there's just not enough support for the teacher. Because there's just not enough support for the teachers. And now I'm going to say, can you help us take care of the PD needs? Now, I'm here to tell you very clearly to everybody on the committee, this requires an outside source. It is not fair to ask the teachers to take on one more thing.
I think that's what the teachers have expressed in, in our outreach to the teachers, that they are dedicated to their students, that they want to be doing the work within the classroom, and that having, having a go-to person that can come in and do model lessons in the classroom, help them disaggregate their data, help them identify different ways of utilizing the curriculum that we have. Not asking to have a one-to-one in every classroom. But we do have math specialists, math interventionists, and reading interventionists in the district who are working, this year, we piloted it at the middle school. So we have Bernie and Mike, Bernadette Carsley and, and Mike Kirby, who retired, who through a grant of spending time, working with a grade level to help them understand, at a higher level, what they can do. So that the teachers can, can take that time to meet with them, or they can come in the classroom while they're actually teaching the students, and they're teaching the teachers while the teachers are teaching their students. And it's pretty powerful. Yeah. But keeping the, the teachers within that classroom, you get such a better bang for your buck when they're doing it on the spot with the students. And I think we have found that's been the most effective, and the teacher buy-in to that. They want to be in the classrooms, they want to be teaching their students, they want the extra knowledge and the extra support.
So you're telling me that unless we have a dedicated math interventionist, we're not going to get anywhere?
No, oh, no, I think our teachers will get us somewhere, we're looking at the pace. We're looking at wanting to go, we want to be bigger, faster, and stronger than we're counting on.
It's not going to be any better, because this has been on the table, you, you've just all said it. It's not as if you haven't asked for it in the four years.
But the revenue standard isn't just by the teachers, anything that, that they need, right?
And it's not going to get any better.
Right.
You're telling me it's not going to get any better unless we have, in, in math, I'm just taking one as an example.
I would rephrase that and say it will get better if we have a math interventionist. I have the trust, I have, I have the trust in the-
I got that, but it's, but it hasn't gotten, has it gotten better in the last four years?
No. But I don't want to have to do another recap of what three of those last four years looked like for us.
Right, I got it.
And, you know, the idea that, you know, I would ever feel comfortable in spreading teachers any thinner than they're spread now, I can't even fathom it. It, it's nothing that you can just come at and say, yeah, we've got folks in-house that can make this happen. It's too deep, it's too complicated. The program being used isn't well enough understood. I could give you, you know, a laundry list of reasons why, and I do understand that. This isn't the right time for that, no, no. They, they need to keep their head in the games that we're trying to perfect. If we're looking for big deals and big contributions to be made here, it has to be focused and sustainable. And using in-house staff and saying, what do you think you've got, you know, you must have a trick in that? Can't, I can't get behind it. And I'm sorry if that came across as-
No, I'm ta-, I'm just saying, it's not going to get any better, is what you're saying.
Yes, I just wanted to shift gears a little bit. I have a question and then a follow-up comment. I was really interested to see on your slide the point about negotiating potentially with FKO to use some of your space. I was just wondering if we, if you had a status update on where things stood with those negotiations?
So, yeah, so they're, I wouldn't call them negotiations, as, as much as I would call them planning sessions, so, and it's me who does that. So I've been working with FKO for quite some time, trying to strategize in how we can support our students of need because we share the same students, because they live in this community. And they've spent ongoing discussions about how we may do that. The last time I spoke with Brianna from FKO, they had a waiting list of students who would otherwise be coming from the Gorman Fort Banks to their location across the street here from Town Hall. And, and they don't have the room for the students, the physical space. At last conversation, Brianna was reaching out to the parents on that waiting list to get a sense of whether or not they would still be interested, or have they found other care. And it's important for FKO to know that because in order for them to come into the Fort Bank School, of course, there are costs related to the use of the school building. And again, that, it's, FKO is not a school program, but it, the children are, we share the children. So she was reaching out to those folks. They also have a lot of regulation that they have to go by in terms of space that we may have available, the square footage of that space, whether or not they would get a cer-, a certificate to be able to use it based on sort of what we have for space and, and what they may need. And so that was, I think about two weeks ago was our last conversation, I know she was surveying her parents. And she was going to get back to me for further, you know, for further discussion on that.
Yeah, my comment was just thinking about this issue about social and emotional learning and the need for high-quality after-school care, and the fact that we have such a reputable agency. I just wanted to sort of use my position to encourage those conversations.
We do partner with them.
Yeah, I was just imagining that, that we actively partner with FKO. And as recently as just last week, we were advised of a partnership grant that was received for the benefit of students. And it has a pretty hearty component of academics that would be facilitated by our staff involved. In fact, a posting for positions associated with that partnership grant went out today. So, yeah, so I'm not even a hundred percent sure that FKO has the staff and, you know, has even the energy right now to be looking in that direction. This grant that we're partnering with them on now, it's an edu-, it's a high-quality educational after-school program grant, is what it's intended to be. It's going to be a lot of work, there's no question about it. So I don't know if FKO still is even interested in that. But I chose to include that on the slide just because anything that gives you a sense that opportunities for students and benefits for families are opening up is something, something to boast about. So that's why it's on there. You know, but like Mrs. Howard said, the dialogue has happened and the door is open for them.
Great, great, yeah, I just, I know as somebody who needs childcare after-school and what a great resource that is, and, and how many parents have been shut out this year. So, good, I'm really happy to hear that.
Any other questions?
Yes.
I hear you, you discussing the, essentially that how efficiently used the time is for those half-day PDs. So I'm wondering if in future planning, if the discussion either has been or could be talking about instead of students having half-days, alternating full-days off, it might be easier for families to plan, and it also might be more beneficial for the staff to plan to just dedicate that full day to PDs?
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely worthy of, I mean, we look at our calendar every year based, certainly starting with the leadership team to see what our needs are, what our professional development planning needs are, what our parent conferences are. I know switching our parent conferences during COVID was one thing. And then we, we changed it up a little bit again this year. And that was sort of a tilt for parents that was difficult because change just in general is difficult. But it's certainly something to further discuss as we, as we start to plan for next year, which is going to start to happen the first week of December, as we start our budget planning.
Then my other question is, because I know that it's great that volunteers are allowed back in the school, and I also say that as a room parent, it's great to be back in the school. For, for family members or community members who are interested in helping to support the kids, are there things that volunteers could do in the classrooms to help maybe facilitate some of those small group activities?
We have a couple of community, well, not this year we don't, but we have had some community volunteers. We send out a weekly newsletter. You know what?
You didn't hit send?
It's you. Wait really soon, we're not sitting here, we'll get that to you. But we do do that. The problem that we really have is in reaching out to the families. You know, not the families, I'm sorry, but to the community members. How do we do that right now? So we have this newsletter that goes out, and we're hoping that through word of mouth, things like that will happen. We did have a few people that worked with us last year, and hopefully it'll happen again. You know, towards the end of last year.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we do, and we would take them. So if there's anybody, I'm glad you asked this, I don't know, maybe you just gave me another opportunity and I'm not even aware of it, right? Because some people watch this. But yes, as long as somebody is cory, there is never a time that we would say no to a volunteer. If you don't have, you know, if your strength isn't in teaching reading or teaching math, writing, just providing supervision, never a time that we don't want some help.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I want to just add, add to that because I didn't realize that it was open again, so I'll be calling you.
Please do.
And I thank you, Ms. Pearson. As you know, we've taken a little bit of a different turn this year, bringing administrators in and really trying to not self-promote, but educate the community as well as the school committee. The school committee has to hear from me and listen to me twenty-four seven. So I know this, a lot of this stuff is repetitive to you. But we're feeling strongly that the community needs to hear more. And if they can see it on a school committee meeting and hear Ms. Pearson, then, you know, they'll, they'll learn some stuff. And we're trying to outreach a little bit more. So in not next committee meeting, but the following committee meeting, you'll have another guest and we'll keep doing this throughout the year. I know it makes the meetings a little bit longer, but certainly folks so far have come to the table with really good information that, all in sort of one forty-five-minute session that you'll be able to really take back and think about. And we appreciate the questions because we know what we do every day. And we can talk real fast and kind of just spit it out there. But asking us questions is, is important for us to help us kind of hone in on how, how we need to explain things to the committee and to the community. And I do think it's beneficial to the community. I've gotten some good feedback from the community that they do like this portion of the committee meeting. So, so far, so good.
And the opportunity to be able to share what we're doing with the community and with the committee with an eye towards what you'll be thinking about next year is also very much appreciated. We have a phenomenal staff, we have very supportive parents. And, you know, we're grateful to be in the position that we are, and so I appreciate you guys inviting me to share that. Do you need to rephrase that question?
No, thank you, Eileen, for your time, we appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, it is very helpful.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen.
Okay, moving on, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of November seventh, two thousand twenty-two? Motion by Ms. Hope, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion for payroll, I'm sorry, for warrant SVW twenty-three dash eight in the amount of two hundred eighty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-three cents?
Motion, second.
Motion by Ms. Barry, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes, and to confirm, we have no payroll warrant budget transfers. Okay, we do have a donation from the Wasabi Technologies for the Wasabi Fenway Bowl, and we, I would like a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second, and then thank you, Julie.
Motion.
Do you need a roll call?
No.
Yeah. Any discussion, and can you just give us a quick overview?
Sure, so the Wasabi Fenway Bowl is a college football bowl game. It's the inaugural bowl, even though we've tried to do it for the last three years. So Wasabi Technologies, which is the company I work for, is the title sponsor of, of the game. And there's a philanthropic arm of the Wasabi Fenway Bowl, which is called the Honor Roll. And the Honor Roll serves to identify and acknowledge educators and administrative staff of, of schools in the New England area that have gone above and beyond. So there's a component there where those folks are recognized. And the other piece of it is that businesses that are involved in the bowl are encouraged to make it ticket, ticket donations out of their ticket bank to local school systems. So through that, I was able to sort of leverage my position to be able to donate a hundred tickets to the Wasabi Fenway Bowl to this year's graduating senior class, so.
Thank you so much. May I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
On behalf of the students, I have the senior class, I thank you.
Yes.
Um, we have a, may I have a motion to approve the Winarc request for Special Olympics? And that would include a waving of the fee.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hope, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve the Boston Taekwondo request to use the facilities for the belt ceremony?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hope, second by Ms. Petrie. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. We have no subcommittee reports tonight, do we have a superintendent's report?
Um, I do know for this evening, based on Ms. Pearson's presentation, I have some items that I'll leave for public relations so we can get it in one large sweep.
Okay, do we have any homeschool applications?
We do not.
Do we have appointments, resignations, retirements?
We do, we have no appointments this evening. Under resignations, we have Kirby Geer, who is a second-grade teacher, Shawna Duffy, who's an ESP at the Gorman Fort Banks, a part-time office aide who started with us a couple of weeks ago, who could not continue. We have the Spanish teacher from the middle school, who I believe we spoke about before, but this was a resignation from September, early on in September. This particular teacher came on board, took another position in another school district. So she gave her notice and stayed with us for a short period of time. And a Lisa Boxel, who's a seventh-grade science teacher. She has also resigned, these are a little bit behind, so these happened a bit of time ago. And, you know, it's interesting, which was at the beginning of the school year, we have, we've had several maternity leaves this year, which is, which is great. Families are expanding and, and we're very happy for our staff members. Three of our staff members who started the school year on maternity leave have elected to, to continue and have resigned so that they can continue to stay home and, and parent their, their new child for the remainder of this school year. They are not on a leave of absence, they've actually resigned, so they have been replaced. And like I said, one was from September that we knew was happening, and one was a temporary person who has since been replaced. All those jobs were posted, but I don't know if they were properly delivered to the school committee as resignations. And for that reason, I had them on this list for tonight. We have no pending retirements, no postings, and no leave of absence to report.
Okay, thank you. Under new business, may I have a motion to approve the Winthrop School Committee and the SEIU Local Eight 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 Cafeteria Food Services Memorandum of Agreement? That was, I believe, included in our package.
Motion.
Second. Okay. Motion by Ms. Petrie, second by Ms. Barry. Any discussion?
I just want to say congratulations on both sides. I'm glad that the cafeteria workers are happy, glad that the committee did their job. Terrific.
Good news.
And just a point of information, this is the twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-five agreement with the cafeteria staff. And for general information, there was wage adjustment for year one, which is this year, twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-three. Then effective July first of twenty-twenty-three, the wage schedule will be increased by two percent. And effective July first, twenty-twenty-four, the new wage schedule will be increased by two percent again. And so year one, there was a slight wage adjustment, year two, there was a two percent increase, and year three, there'll be a two percent increase. That's just sort of a broad overview of what you're voting on. I know you're all aware of it based on the number of people who sit on the subcommittees. And I thank the school committee for the work that they had done with the cafeteria group. And happy to report that they have voted and ratified this contract and the school committee vote will allow us to then move forward and implement the contract.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Lutteiri?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. We have no unfinished business tonight, and that will open up public relations. And I would like to make a statement at this time.
Yes, please.
We have received numerous emails regarding the contract with the members of the ESP bargaining unit that we have been working on diligently for some time now.
Several months.
Several months. And I wanted to clarify an apparent misunderstanding that is prevalent in some of the communication that we have received. We have not walked away from negotiations, and in fact, we remain extremely committed and dedicated to ensuring that these negotiations continue and that we are able to resolve our differences and come to an agreement that is of benefit to our entire community. We have had many productive sessions with this unit, and we have come to an impasse, an apparent impasse related to salary and additional compensation. Given this impasse, we have asked to involve a mediator in the process. This is a part of the negotiation process, this is how it's prescribed by the state, and we are simply following in that process to come to an expeditious agreement as soon as possible. and we are simply following in that process to come to an expeditious agreement as soon as possible. Mediation allows both parties to continue with the discussion with the goal of reaching an agreement. A mediator has had several years of experience in labor matters and contract negotiations, and is a skilled professional brought in to situations like this in order to bring both sides together. This process was previously followed during the negotiations of twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty-two collective bargaining with the Winthrop School Committee and the Winthrop Teachers Association. And we were able to come to a successful agreement at that time, following the mediation, and we are hopeful that this will have a similar result. We share the goal of reaching a fair and equitable contract as we value the dedication and the efforts of all WPS employees, including our ESPs.
Thank you. I just have a few public relations that will be rolled into my superintendent report. Um, Powder Puff Team, congratulations to, to our, our group, um, twenty-twenty-two. Powder Puff Team beat Revere twenty-two to nothing. Anytime we beat Revere at anything, it's a day to celebrate. The, uh, just more items, the, uh, Winter High School Homecoming for students in grades nine through twelve was held Saturday night at the Pleasant Park Yacht Club. Um, it was well-attended, uh, more students than we expected, which was great. Uh, and I can report from my own child that it was a wonderful time. Uh, and Mr. Coromby let me know that the kids were well-behaved, respectful, uh, and enjoyed themselves. The Winter High School Cheerleaders went to States on Sunday, um, and they came in in tenth place. We're incredibly proud of them going to States and then having such a terrific season as they did. We have a few All-Star athletes, volleyball All-Stars Hannah Asuabi and Sarah DiGennaro. Congratulations to both. The Soccer All-Stars Abby Holmes, Daniela Gomez, and Laura Manya. Congratulations, uh, to the girls on that team. Boys Soccer All-Conference Mateo Martinez and Golf All-Star Dan Liberty. So great job, uh, by all of those students as well as the teams that they were involved in. The, uh, Winter High School Football Team takes on Revere this year on Thanksgiving Day at ten o'clock in the morning, um, and we are home on Miller Field, so we're excited about that. The Pro Shop, uh, will be selling tickets Tuesday and Wednesday, tickets at ten dollars. And students can also purchase tickets during lunch, and tickets will be available at the gate as well. The Boys Varsity Basketball Team is having a fundraiser at the Winter Palms Restaurant on Thursday, December first, between the hours of five o'clock and nine o'clock. That's for dine-in or takeout. Ten percent of the proceeds will be donated to the Viking Boys Basketball Booster Club. There'll also be a fifty-fifty raffle that will be drawn at the restaurant that evening. Those tickets are five dollars a spot, and you can Venmo a payment, if you'd like to, to at Vikings Boys B-Ball, using the word "basketball" in your Venmo. And that's on their website. Winter Public Health Department is offering COVID-nineteen booster shots for eight, um, for all ages every Tuesday from nine AM to seven PM at the Winter Health Department, forty-five Pauline Street, which is the E.B. Newton. Uh, that phone number there, if you would like to call, is six-one-seven-five-three-nine-five-eight-three-nine, and you can register to go in and, and have a booster, uh, shot. Happy Thanksgiving, um, and little vacation break, uh, to all of the members of our faculty and families, uh, in the Winter Public Schools. We're wishing people a safe, healthy, and relaxing time, um, whether you're with friends or family, uh, celebrating or just enjoying a few days to yourself. We, we hope everyone has a nice couple of days off.
Other public relations.
Yes, um, I would like to, um, announce again, the chamber, along with, I believe, Viking Pride is, um, coordinating the tree lighting ceremonies for, so thirty-first ceremony down at French Square on Friday, um, the twenty-fifth, from four to seven. There will be fun activities, family activities, there will be photos with Santa. Um, so a lot of, um, a lot of stuff going on down there, um, in the newly revamped, I guess, French Square. Uh, we encourage families and we invite the school committee to go down as well. Uh, on behalf of the town council and the town, I, I would also like to wish everyone a happy and merry, and, uh, healthy, I guess, Thanksgiving. As we approach the holiday season, it's always just, you know, be safe, be careful. There's a lot going on out there, a lot of kids are home from school, colleges and such, so be careful, enjoy, and, um, see you soon.
With that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hope, second by Ms. Barry. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Ms. Luteri?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Hope?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes, we are adjourned, thank you.